Thank you very much. Um, so again, thank you very much for your patience. I really appreciate that. Being started Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand and three at seven oh six P M. Please stand for the right. Um, it was also against the message that we really did try to sneak into the microphone. It's hard for folks listening on Zoom to really kind of hear what he said in the room. So do your best. Really appreciate that. Um, Lori Vogel.
Thank you.
Council Kendall.
Here.
Council Martinez.
Here.
Council Payton. Council Sheldon.
President.
Council Smith. Mayor Linnahan here. And Council Page is excused this evening. Thank you very much. I don't know if I is our consent agenda this evening. We have the guidance on that. Send another. The approval of the decision to be confirmed by this department. Such and then really such and then the approval of the vote for twenty minutes. And residential two, 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 seven, you get the points to the first to write. Are there any questions, additions, corrections, especially to these documents?
Move the document.
Second.
All right, there are first and second, the discussion. You're not always here to stay often.
All right.
May I post a name? Very non motionary. Thank you. At six in our public comments, the time when we encourage those which would be comment on um things that are happening in the community. If they have any concerns about this in the community, this is the time that we wish to work with you. Lori, um, please thank you for speaking, writing, nothing prior to the meeting. All right, and whether is there anyone online who wishes to speak? Or um during the public comment period? All right, let the record show that no one would just go like Lori this time. Um, so to see being that we have a presentation by our county commissioner Jerry Gulli. Um, so we certainly appreciate you being here this evening, sir. I was good to see you. Um, so we look forward to more presentation and update at the county level. And I'm sure we also have some uh questions for you as well, so.
Thank you, Mayor. It's uh it is good to be here, Mayor and Kansas City councilors. Uh, just a couple of comments. Um, today is not the day you have to buy your passion for this tomorrow. So it will be around, you still have another day. I've got five months. I never find one mistake. Uh, anyway, uh, it was good. I didn't know that you were going to have a planning commission conversation today. I would have loved to listen in on that, got here early. So my apologies. The planning commission is one area that I've always said there is no possible way I could I could even qualify for being on that commission. Uh, they just do a lot of homework. Uh, they're committed and try and get them to be visionary. And so I always congratulate and applaud the planning commission and the work that they have to do. I was surprised a little bit though that I didn't see a pumpkin ridge up here is up there is the possibility. You know, I don't know if you've seen that letter or not from twenty representatives from Salem. Thinking that pumpkin ready would be a good place for so much of that. Actually, I don't know. I don't have a membership and I don't have an ownership, so yeah, I'm doing that.
Um.
Well, I know that and see there I'm advocating that you kind of like to comment about. We'll be ignored on the residential side of things, you know, but maybe in the legal. So anyway, thank you very much for this time together. I'll try and be quick. And I also try and um really shorten my comments to so that could give you an opportunity that you've got some burning questions that you need to do. I do need to say one more thing though. Um, Council Kendall. I look in the bio, you know, thirty eight years. I thought Lori would like this. Our county commissioner was the only one that was leading that charge. I think I think he generally checked on you.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, how many years you're doing this position? Coming back.
I think he's going to have, he's got a year and a half ago. I don't know if he's going to run again. I think he might be approaching. When you. Yeah. Well, seven years, thirty eight.
Four years ago. Well, I believe.
I'm gonna see him tomorrow and I'm gonna tell you he's going over the big dog.
After rerun. Again.
No, I know you're not. Well, under more serious stuff that I think is uh we for the last couple of years, we not here in Western worship and gathering and certainly in collaboration with some of the practices from because we've been looking at rural broadband, the importance of that. So people would emphasize the importance of doing that. Every government has committed sixty four billion dollars in a variety of pockets uh to go forth. Our Oregon um broadband um office has had to re uh ramp up very, very quickly. And we're scrambling, quite frankly, the maps that the FCC had of the mapping, which was identified where the houses were specifically in the rural way were significantly wrong, weren't strong. Western mostly kind of move along all over the state, so we have been challenging that. All of this, of course, takes time and a lot of work. And we had a very short, eventual time to dispute those things. So we're in the process of doing that. I understand um mayor that your team has also been working um with uh city of Hillsborough and some others. Whole pack uh on the old broadband um aspirations. And so that's maybe how we can do that. Um, you know, the focus for me has always been North Plains, Banks, Gaston, and then swimming down around to Forest Row and Cornelia's. Just kind of as a move. And I think I still um we could see that we might be able to accomplish that. And what we want to make, you know, even running down the table through the feds. It's even off of that kind of money we need to burst the line. And I think that's been our focus. So we will absolutely try and do that. I heard from um Toma Chair, the commission chair, David Amamono, a couple of days ago. He was talking about Amazon. In fact, we stepped out and was providing some cell phones to us on Highway six from uh Thelma to their county line. We are now reaching out and asking them to help extend that over. If you've driven Highway six, it's pretty dangerous highway that has lots of dead spots. Um, and so we would love to have um somewhat active uh response on safety in that area. And so we will continue to do certain development uh and in Amazon and anyone else who wants to step up to the plate to um to facilitate that. So we look forward to that. Um, I'm gonna jump into a a smaller subject and then I'm gonna come back and talk about budget and ARPA uh dollars. Um, but I I did receive an email the other day uh to reduce the speed limit on west view uh coming into town uh from throughout usually rest of corrections. Um, I advocated for that to be thirty five a couple of years ago. And it was told that that's an ODOT decision. There's a lot of study that has to be done. And it was basically uh didn't hear a real warm reception on that. So I stopped at that point. Understand now that that's been refreshed. Um, the county has been working with ODOT. They have to do a speed survey and all those things. They've done that. We um and we identified drivers that are currently going in forty eight miles an hour on this road with an exiting speed of forty five miles an hour. So the county is reckoning like forty mile an hour speed limit on that section of the town. Uh, I don't know what you think about that, but I know it's a bill and you guys are working and hoping with the county folks on that. And um, I don't know if it's a very fine, but at least it's a step in the right direction.
Um, I have been. Thank you, Commissioner Willie. I I guess the one thing to note there is they rely on the data, the ODOT study data. I said, you have to gauge it from an eighty fifth percentile speed data. There was a bill passed in Salem a couple of years ago that says local jurisdictions can use something lower if justified. It's it's a little convoluted and I we even came across some correspondence that the county engineer Stacy, nice guy. He's been super helpful with this. He has noted that before. So it's a conversation we're gonna try to keep having because the the speed on a straight highway is one thing, but speed in an area that's becoming more busy. It's got curves. It's got some sightline issues. It's got housing. And now it's it's a safer route to school. I think those are other factors that maybe we should try to throw into the mix too.
I would completely agree with you and I would wholeheartedly support thirty five, quite frankly, because that's what we need to be in that area and serving uh with schools on at twenty uh during the part of it. And I don't know how all that works, but I think um, yeah, reach out if you would like me to help you in any way in a formal fashion. So.
Okay.
Certainly.
Why is every county road that we have full sides of which means that the store to take over?
You know, that's a, that's a huge question. And it's not just about this road. It's about a number of roads that the county owns um that are right smack down in the middle of cities, Cornell, one of them. Um, if you look to Beaverton, ODOT owns a couple of major streets down there, which are problematic when you're talking about enhancements, improvements to not only the safety, but just the road itself. So um, I my only answer would be probably that these things were identified decades ago. Uh, and um, when there was nothing out here but farms. So now there's more than that and we still have the ownership issues. Um, I think there's a couple of places that I'm not aware of. Sweet Road, for example, if you go from Farmington Road to Murray and you have West. Um, that's owned partially by the city of Beaverton, partially by Washington County, partially by ODOT. So you can imagine if we try to invest in Farmington Road and how we can get some improvements done or where we get money. Pretty difficult to do that. So I don't have a real good answer for you, except that somebody made that decision long before us and we're stuck with it. Good.
Fine. Well, you said North Avenue.
I I think I can explain that one a little bit better. North Avenue, as it exists currently, it doesn't go anywhere. It's only contained within the city of North Plains city limits. A lot of these other county roads, they're county roads because they connect to cities within the county and West Union being one example.
Yeah, thank you. So earlier.
Doesn't mean I like it, but sorry, doesn't mean we like everything about it, but anyway, thank you.
Well, I I can tell you there's there's some places the county would love to give up. And there's some roads the county would love to have. And so we do know what we have. Um, and as as the planning commission talked about earlier, um certainly Senate Bill four, the summer conductor legislation moving ahead on, um, I congratulate North Plains there, you and your staff uh for their not only their commitment to it, their vision, the just the enthusiasm that they put into that. So hopefully we'll see some good things come out of that or at least um I guess a vision for the future on the road along with this because um North Plains certainly has a lot of opportunity. And um, they're doing a good job of making sure that you guys are going into the industry and counties, so. Don't get hurt, so. And last, uh, and I don't know if that time can be slightly quick or not. Um, budget, budget is the big deal. Uh, we are all going into budget season, as you know, Western County is twenty five million dollars in the hole from our general funds. So we've been looking at where we can uh make any kind of cuts. We have uh the demand for increased services while we have inflation. And we have, of course, property tax cap of three percent. So uh, all of those things is kind of a perfect storm, so to speak. We've been working through that. We have had our director heads um submit budgets at four, seven, and ten percent cuts. Uh, it's not going to be across the board. We're going to do this with a scalpel, not an axe. And so I'm working on that. Our budget drops, wrap, drops on the twenty seventh of this month. And that's when we will then start our budget committees and fellow individuals. Uh, this is a painful process. Um, and so we have, I know, Mayor, you you talked to me about MSTIP money. We've talked about library monies, but the CCLIs. Um, all of those are hard decisions we made. We haven't made those decisions yet. Obviously, there's a bunch of committee that they are on the table for discussion. I have to be candid with that. And I didn't want to do one of those options. Um, but we have to learn and everything. I think my analogy on the deficit CCLs, so like there is that I believe that the voters believe when they pass the last levy and when they pass such a levy before that, previous levies. They thought they were paying for one hundred percent of the cost of libraries. And unfortunately, that's not the case. Simmons and the county, we saw the dividend after going, after contributing money in the general fund with support through libraries. And um, it makes it difficult where we have to go through uh budget cuts. And we have to be looking at everything. There's there's no safety that is.
Yeah, um, and I would interject about that. I think that um what I would advocate for is for the county to put that contribution to the CCLS, to the library system on a pepper pepperable basis. And I say that because and I'm sure that either a caller or nobody can provide you with the specifics. But I I believe that the city of North Plains contributes a significant amount from our general fund to the library. And when you look at other cities, for example, Banks is not, but they get, they receive the science and they receive more from WCCRS um for to support their library. And if you look at other cities, Arlington is another city we talked about earlier. If they receive uh a large tranche of that, uh, a large portion of those funds from WCCRS, then their city actually puts into various other from them now fine. So I I think that there's an equity that I, and I know that equity wasn't uh a big um, um, very important topic when you're looking at anything to the county. And I would just strongly encourage um the local man. So when you get those numbers and say, well, Keith, is it really fair and possible to do that possible?
Well, I think that we CCLs would certainly be the first one to make that up. Uh, what I'm told is that obviously we passed a levy and the levy had some specifics to that. Uh, and so we have to comply with those specifics and those particular implications. But I think we're going to see some more conversation over the next few years as to how we need to probably balance that. And um I had some long conversations about a year ago with Cornelius Library. It's the same thing, as you know. The deficit CCLs bases on a lot of their allocations on items checked out. And when you um, when you go to the Cornelius Library, you see a lot of people using the internet fingers, which is not a checkout feature. So you've got a lot of sophistication, exactly what you want, providing a good service to your community. But it doesn't count as a, a library board for them. So Mayor, you have something, you have like, you want to say something?
I just know that our very much well, and she keeps pretty uh specific details and data on checkouts and check ins and you know, uh, library usage in and out of the door and also with computers and all that sort of thing. Now, if you're looking for to help you with that conversation, the board members, I'm sure that we would be very happy to provide that information so that um the board can look at this with their active lens. If that helps.
If actually anything we can add, well, I am not under the CCLs board, so I will be in that, that it does come back to the mission. Um, so I would encourage you to be actively engaged. And as I probably didn't even guess that you are. So yeah, stay tuned with that. Unfortunately, for the immediate, um yeah, we'll have to have more than that on about what it is.
So I think it's a policy concern. I mean, it's really to put that to your head that we have, so um, but I won't continue to be that short. I think you hear what I'm saying.
You're probably that asked, what you brought to it. Um, and lastly is uh ARPA, uh, you know, the ARPA money that we got from the feds. It was a hundred and sixteen million dollars. Uh, we got that in two charges, the first fifty eight million dollars was a couple of years ago. When we were in the midst of COVID and that uh, a big portion of that money was used for helping human services for COVID for um encouragement of vaccinations and just a whole host of things. And so now we have moved our way through that. We got our second fifty eight million dollars last summer. And we kind of hit the pause button on that because we were hoping things would come out as they have. Um, we have been looking at uh stopping some of the allocations that we made in tranche one. So we have about uh ten or twelve million dollars uh of tranche one that still hasn't been spent. So we again hit the pause button on that. And now are looking at uh the entire package as to what options we have. In that whole timeframe, we discovered that we had some pretty serious deferred maintenance on our uh jail and on some of our mental health facilities. And so we have decided to allocate thirty four million dollars of that to fix uh some of those facilities. And we have another ten or twelve million dollars that we have to come up with for some of the other facilities. But that's what we have decided to do. That has um, I guess I'd say we've decided to do that. That's coming before us tomorrow for kind of a, a little bit of a verbal commitment. And then real affirmation or vote will be taken in May and in a few weeks. Um, this is, this is a very, very difficult decision for us. There are some very unhappy organizations uh because um they have different ideas as to what we should do with this money. And I think the analogy that I continue to use, I guess, uh, in my processing, you know, I'm former CPA, so I like numbers. Um, if we didn't use this money and we borrowed this money, we could certainly be there. We have to borrow about forty million dollars. If we borrow forty million dollars, it takes us twenty years to pay it, which equals to about eighty million dollars. Annual payments about four million dollars and represents twenty seven positions at the county that we have to pay. So it's very difficult for me to make that comparison when we are stretched in our services that we need to provide to our county residents. And we would be considering basically giving away thirty five million dollars and borrowing forty million dollars and burdening the commissions for the next twenty years. Very difficult. So we're gonna have more conversations on that tomorrow. Uh, and we'll be making that decision in about the three quarters. So any questions?
Thanks.
So, yeah, so the Congress is on, all the making that.
Unless we can find the silver bullet somewhere, yes, I wouldn't read, you know, I don't think the numbers are fixed at this point. Yeah, that's uh, but they're pretty darn close. But you might guess I have not seen the draft budget. I will see it at the same time in the morning or so. Uh, we are continuing to have conversations, but and I'm not a big fan of reducing the MSTIP either, right? I've been a big fan of that, and I, Tonya, our CIO, has said, we had lots of conversations about that. And um, those are my decisions. Yes, guys?
Yeah, one probably my chief question was in relation to the traffic and pitching buddy. And I know that uh, you know, probably the bigger picture that I've ever seen is that twenty five million. What, why, is this, this, this has, what is this stem from? Where is this burden coming from? Where, you know, where did we go wrong four, five, six, seven years ago? Is what I'm asking. And how do we fix that? And are we addressing that going forward? Or how do we address that going forward? Is that gonna be part of the budgeting message? Because obviously we all share some of that pain.
Absolutely, and it will be a part of the budgeting message. If in um, in a real short version of how we've been feeling. Um, inflation over the past year has been, I don't know, it's been eighty, nine, ten percent. We all know what the cap is on our property taxes is three percent. So three percent raise is hoping to run our primary revenue service. Inflation's going to be in the range of ten percent. I mean, difficulty is standing. There's been an additional demand for mental health services for a variety of other services that are not funded by the state. And so it becomes our response to that as a community, when we have no facilities available. Then you look at the number of unfunded mandates that our state has given to the county's incentive. One, when we start thinking about reducing crime from the standpoint of who gets charged a felony versus who gets charged a misdemeanor. The state has to reimburse us the felonies. They do not the uh misdemeanors. That we we've as a nation, Congress, the misdemeanor sector has been submitted. So patient, basically, whether it's a major crime that we remember very um, that our companies are becoming less and less and selling the revenue services becoming less. And the state, while we have to deal with all of the additional offenses and misdemeanors and we have to pay for them. So the landmarked services is significantly going up, then we have crime that's going up. So the demand for services is more and more. Um, I think probably currently uh the state is considering um delegating the medical examiner responsibilities from the state to the counties. We don't have facilities to do that. We don't have personnel to do that. It's unfunded. There's no money coming with it. They're just making a decision that we should take care of the medical examiner responsibilities, which is a state, um, which is a state regulation uh that somebody does it. So we are going to be tasked with that. So um, it's a combination of an increased demand for services decrease basically in the delta between inflation and property tax revenues and other sources of revenues. Um, it's a combination of a variety of things. And you absolutely will see that, Russ, in the uh, in the budget message that Congress is trying to provide with the draft budget.
Okay, thanks. And the other thing I I just get a sense that you know, the state's holding on to more money than they should be. And and maybe we need to get after our local elected, our state officials. Because I, you know, they're they're worried about a rainy day. And I think that rainy day is here. Uh, especially with the the burdens of inflation and some of those things. But you know, our roads, even uh Highway twenty six through this part of the county is crumbling. Uh, many of the the uh overpasses, the on and off ramps are breaking down. And and I know there's somewhere in their list, but they just don't seem to uh be addressing those things as the least as quickly as I'd like to see. But I, you know, I don't feel that part of us being a part of putting some pressure on Salem to, you know, get get some of the rainy day ones out in into the communities and on the road and some of, some of those types of things.
Well, don't get me started at that. Well, don't get me started at that. The um, three billion dollars of money that we're going to be taking back to us last year. Or next year. Three billion dollars. And that's because somebody doesn't want to project financially, but our revenue streams is going to be. Um, I don't understand that process, I don't understand. You look at ODOT and if you listen to ODOT and find years, they're saying, um, they didn't have to set less money than they have now. In its primary, as it has. Nobody seems to want to deal with that. And um, yeah, I don't understand neither. Um, but I wouldn't have their job in Salem for nothing. So, I guess I can stand up in the background without feeling. Give my thoughts.
Well, and, and I know that you brought up this and um. Um, on other meetings when we have um, uh, like from ODOT on the call, um. I think I myself and maybe even Cherokee, we always bring up the uh, the, the need for um. An on-off ramp in one road. And um, you can bet that dollar every time that you saw a call and you have a conversation about. More things and transportation needs and the issues that we're facing, and so the urban road network expansion. We always bring up one road and uh, we will continue to bring up one road and the need for. ODOT to address that and, and to help us, you know, because. We're having that, we're, we're, when we expand, when we expand that open. We are going to be uh, help uh, getting our people in our, this community, this, and pushing rain. So I will continue to write for that and navigate for that and show that we do, since you're here. HSA, it's the same, I mean, it's, it's a program that's been around since, what, mid eighties? Um, and it has helped many, many, many communities. Um, and I feel like Rowan Peter, Big Paul is not who, is not fiscally responsible. And um, we have, we have cities who are included that um. Need improvements on our roads. Um, you know, people are moving to our community, we're one of the fastest growing communities in the state. Um, and so many other cities across Washington County also need those cars. So uh, again, I, we have that much, but I, you know, I know that you've got a paper, I said, and I know that. Uh, others is in that same voting, but I haven't tested anymore. Which is really need that program alive and keep somewhere, you know, there's.
Certainly, we'll share that message with uh, our CIO, um. It is, we are very, very fortunate, we're so, to start, but. There's nobody there, and. There needs to be also some creative thought given to the fact that we don't have gas tax going, uh, gas taxes going down. And so, uh, why we can't be envisioning a behavioral miles travel or some other form. Of gas tax, and it just seems like there's such a significant resistance to that because. I don't know, maybe gas tax is easy and the rest of it's gonna be hard, but. Um, I would love to see us have that conversation on V M T. Because I absolutely think it's the place to go, and I said that, said this in this uh, format as well as others. Uh, I don't drive an electric vehicle, I don't pay gas tax, and so. Tax me. The only tax you do that I pay is vehicle registration fees. And that's all county does. So, again, this is how the state events. But um, I would love to have us, I would have a real concentrated conversation.
Um, I really appreciate your time and appreciate you being able to come now and sharing uh, what's, what's happening at the county level. Uh, but also hearing our thoughts and our concerns and um. Before, I would do, I just wanna make sure, um, the other councilors and um. Staff have any questions or comments or permission vote? Thank you. Um, I also, this on, Lori, now.
You, Russ, too.
I want to work. Um, I also just wanted to echo the comments about the speed limit on West New Road. I know you have walked on that road before, and there was that beautiful pedestrian bridge and.
And you're in, someone take that, the mayor.
Down stroller.
She tried to get me in the baby carriage, so just give it point of course, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
We can do that. But um, I just wanna echo, echo that sentiment about the speed limit reduction. Um, that is a safe practice school, we have three traffic crashes just within that corner within maybe the last year, year and a half. And we said it during last conference meeting, but I just don't know what the threshold is. For Washington County to lower that speed limit, we're going to take someone getting towed. For that speed limit to be reduced, or a guardrail or some other traffic common measure for that road. Um, again, I, I have never walked on that path with my kids, and I live in that adjacent, some of that rich neighborhood. And I refuse to walk on a path, it's such a dangerous intersection, if any car comes off. Right into that walking path, that is, that's almost insane if it's out. And I fully empathize with it being a common road. Um, but what does five miles an hour do? We know that human nature, generally, you're traveling ten miles or over what the speed limit is, so I just. Really, really, really want to thank Andy and Doug, I know the work they did, um, just trying to. Trying to figure out, you know, what is a solution, and I appreciate that. Uh, but here at this table, there's always so much to do, and I really could pass the torch back to you to add the deeper of things. And what that can look like before there's some sort of a tally there.
Well, you have my total support of thirty five, the problem is, because just the one great about us with ODOT. Everyone's to make that decision, we continue to put pressure on, I'll find out why the forty was the recommendation, and I think that, uh, you know, we get lost in. Details and bureaucracy and these kinds of decisions, and I think that's where we are.
You know, my backyard's on Michigan, your neighbor called, you know, it's human drag strip. So my concern is with us flowing. Uh, Jackson School is becoming more popular than going down to Winko. Because we bypass the lights. It's, it's packed up on twenty six, the problem, another problem. Uh, without, you know, avenue, whatever else, you can see, so I know. Don't follow Jackson School Road, it's been written, written all the time. So I know that. The car that's over there, first of all. You know that will be fixed, and that's some of the stuff when you cut that, and a bunch of cuts.
I think uh, any budget cuts, the projects that have been designated. Um, in the, in the programs previous to this will stay in place, the problem, but frankly, we have is that. Um, the cost has exponentially gone up. So we have to be figuring out how can we backfill to get those projects completed even at a. At a twenty or thirty percent higher cost. Um, I was told today that we have a couple of sidewalk projects that came in thirty percent above projected costs. So when we have those kinds of construction costs, it's very, very difficult then to continue spending future money. And while these projects you've got budgeted already are short, and so we're gonna have to kind of redesign some of that. But it's not gonna come out of the money that's currently obligated, it's gonna be, uh, what is it, N S T I P three E? Is that where we are? Um, and so, yeah, it'll be out of future minds. But I also have to realize that we've probably got. I don't know, hundred million dollars. Waiting to be put into projects that have been designated, I mean, money's designated, we just. Can't get through the planning process and the committee process and all the rigors that go along with those things, and then we. Get ready to get them out and they come in twenty percent higher than we anticipated, so. What do we do there? So that's, that's part of what the complications of projects that have been uh, dedicated. Currently, that money we're talking about is in the future.
One of my concerns was one of the projects was on commercial Winko and Russian traffic serving.
Mm-hmm.
And that's putting a new pathway in. Kind of worried, it's kind of dangerous for walking in traffic circle. And kind of wondering why you would want to put one there. Second, if you decide to put one there. It's a six to nine yard project, which would shut down. Set to go to the school, set to go to uh. The city and the fire trucks and heat scarves and everything else. So that's a big concern of mine there.
Well, I'm sure that they have uh, a lot of that planned, because if you go back down Jackson School Road to the roundabout at Scott's Church. Uh, that was a pretty major intersection as well, and they worked through that, that, that has been a. From my standpoint, phenomenal success, I go through that roundabout often. Um, and so I'm sure they can figure this out, I have not seen any plan designs on this round, roundabout. Um, but I, I honestly, I thought it was a good idea when I first heard about it, so. Um, it is in the queue right now for the three E allocation, but it has not been approved yet.
So I was still concerned about it.
Okay, well, and, and I can tell you, you'll have plenty of opportunity to come talk to the county, to the planning commission. Uh, about your concerns and um, make sure they are at least heard.
Sounds good, darling.
Yeah, and uh, my final question, I was gonna ask it earlier, I get around to it, that's. Just a perspective, uh, short of uh, oversight, how well managed is it again?
Good question. Hmm, let's just say that the county has undergone in the last forty years, plus years. Um, pretty significant transition. And. And you know, the previous commissioners, certainly, here and back, uh, for a number of years. Um. I believe transition was. Um, expected and needed. Um, one of the things that, why we all of a sudden have this, then when we were not, when we kind of, we're really. Renovation is because. We wasn't in the deferred maintenance plan, so all of the buildings in that Russian kind of owns. And his responsibility for, we had no. Plan for maintenance, and then when that happens, things start breaking. And that's exactly what's happened, because we firmly believe that. We're gonna, we're staying, I think, the, the real number is forty eight million dollars, just like we have to spend with this community. And we anticipate that at least another ten million next year, and probably ten million the year just to get our. And then move back, ever challenges, and we're in there, we're finally in the queue for a new courthouse. That takes ten years to stay down there. The federal level to get funding, I believe, to do that, so, ten years out, our courthouse is old. Uh, and so, when we don't take care of your car. You know, you don't, everybody's gonna be paying money, paying money. Yeah, emotional presence, they're. If they're, then I think they're gonna see a. Even a, yeah, for a G P I, I'm pretty certain. So, you know, now, that was over too. Now, anyway, you're a John, thank you, thank you.
Good questions and conversations. Um, because speaking of staff, I mean, this is a, I don't think that we could have stopped anything. From your world, so I'll give you our first place.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Uh, speaking of active engagement, you are gonna be well represented this week at the Oregon Library Association Conference in Bend. Um, two full-time and two part-time staff presenting at councils, or a, a conference session, so um. We'll be leading, facilitating, presenting that, and then we also have the Emily West, our new literacy specialist. There uh, for the whole conference, at the co-chair of the Children's Services Commission of O L A. Um, so um, just really proud to showcase the city in Bend this week. Uh, we had a record number of checkouts in March, uh, ever for our library, and um, that. I think is telling me that we're getting back on track as far as trends go. Um, that if the pandemic hadn't happened with the new residents that are coming in, you know, getting back to the lo, expected levels of use. And everything else is in the report, but those are the highlights.
I think that's great, uh, regarding people on that. Um, also, um, I'm just really thrilled, I know that, um. The other night at the uh, community dinner, uh, they will send the, 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 well deserved. Um, but also thrilled to know that. There is a, basically a legacy plan of the banking library, now, so other folks in the community, especially people in the community. Have stepped up to continue with that very, very, very good group, so um. Do those.
Yeah, it's really wonderful to see, I did highlight that in my report. Um, that how smoothly that transition thing is going.
Any other comments or questions, go ahead.
Thank you so much.
Oh, oh.
Another question. Okay. Let's switch up here. We're, looks like like fifteen hundred items in that building.
Here in that lender.
Yeah, I saw that, that's pretty impressive.
We're really proud of that.
Yeah, that just tells me that you're on the, for road and. And so, perfect for that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Chief Haxton.
Good evening. So uh, previous highlight of March was, uh, so it was, uh, working on, uh, certainly, unless it's a, you know, city that looks like a town and. And Chaser, uh, well, it's another, it's a, um. Not, it's a penny and some like, it's a lot of folks in that car. Um, you know, all the savings on all in March, when we were there. Fortunately, they were well attended, it was all right. Um, so I still have a good conversation to have. Um, the government numbers, uh. Uh, after the depression, self-advocacy, I think, although the public demand policy, during, not out of the ratings, but there, on the hillside. Uh, ratings, hours, uh, overtime numbers, it's better. Uh, there's, the importance of all of the, uh, W. Uh, last week, it's quarter time, so, uh, it was reported stats, you know, in the bin for. And showing more side, probably, of them, uh, on those actually split. I think, and, and, uh, like, some, uh, and you have the, uh, the. The followers, I mean, I'm, uh, not forty.
Uh, my only question was, if those might, we're having, looking at the quarter lead. We're out there in front of the, the, that's just records of, uh. More in, in, so that's the way I do that stuff. Thank you. Thank you.
I just wanted to echo that as well as a lot of uh activity done, definitely checks and definitely murders. Um you know, just passing on the kudos. Um and there's also maybe, uh maybe you could share some feedback with the resident during that public safety town hall. Um I know dirty spring works, I know the position is fine, but it was, it was the famous media activity you kind of, you know, the message during that town hall.
Well, to be honest, the theme was mostly uh. Give an update on what we've done for the city uh and see. Community safety, safety stuff, like we didn't stop time and. And then the river, you know, the river side, we're doing and we talked about it, the city council done. Uh. Adopting some of the uh policies for the city. Same thing like that, uh time and place. Where you're holding the quality, the uh policy for uh we can think easy to start. So. That's really what it was. And then I don't know, you have to vote by any kind of update uh. Uh that we talked about, and uh you know, we'll see that kind of question answered with. And I'm not mistaken, having come up on there, so uh it looks like we've got, so we've been on like a specific question answered. All right, thank you.
And then the comments are done.
I don't have a comment. I, I don't have a question, I have a comment. I told Stephen, I, I miss Deputy Conway. She's, she's, she's got a sense of humor like mine, but. Stephen has fallen right back, Officer Shuts has fallen right back into. Where he was just a few years, you know, a couple of years ago. Me and I were talking about the same houses and. Same issues from a couple of years ago and it's like he never missed a beat. So it's, I don't, it's really nice having him back and. So he's a positive, smiling guy and uh good, good out in the community too. So you can pass it on to him. Or I will.
Thanks for bringing up that um that evening for Thursday. So again, that's Thursday here. At six o'clock and all city principals are encouraged to uh be invited out of conversation. So. For those who are new on Thursday, we're going to be working on it. All right, most of our agenda was uh well, as you see, our best, what we have from the community. Um update, uh this garden was happening, there's a painting going on. Um. Staff was helping. Uh any questions for the maybe um for you on this week there, if you have any. Also saying.
Yes, it's very, the, some of the residents came up and they, they got the. Like they're, they're walking along. It's not like they're, like, we're discussing the planning initially. About dancing. Uh can you give us a quick update on what came up with dancing?
Yes, sorry. I'm steering this thing at the same time. Yes, I actually wasn't at the planning commission meeting, but the mayor was as the executive official. I have more um feedback from me, but from. Yes, what I understand was there was a good dialogue during the work session. The planning commission and the residents and um Lenar, the developer and Pacific Community Design, the engineer that. Everyone kind of contributed to the discussion. Ultimately, um Pacific Community Design or P C D said they would come forward as the applicant to propose a code change to make this. Uh a bit clearer. And I think ultimately maybe to meet the intent of what clear vision alley standards and the alleying alleys were supposed to mean back in. Two thousand and seven, when that code was changed. Um but I, from what I understand, the conversation was um. Helpful. So at the next um. Uh meeting, they'll probably discuss it more, but there wouldn't be any, just because of timing, you have to get notice and everything. There wouldn't be any sort of code. To the planning commission until uh June, there just wouldn't be enough time to do it in May. I don't know, Mayor, if that summarizes kind of how things go, but that's what I took away.
Yeah, I may say, you know, they talked about that. I know that Lenar will be mending. Uh making happen both. Believe you.
That, yes, same thing.
The habit of, so. We have some good conversation at the planning commission that was, you know, um. Put feedback from the commissioner to Lenar and, you know, working on that. Um there was um one. Point that was made about clear vision on the intersection of three thirteen and north. And there was some concern about the clear vision as it relates to the parking yard ward. And then coming up with the sign and having that clear vision when there's cars parked on the, you know, east or west side. Um it was just a comment. I don't think it was an action item to that particular moment. I'm not sure if that's something that the planning vision will. Talk about further or if that's something that needs to be talked about further, but. Um there was some concerns about the, the clear vision and if, if. The spacing, if there's enough space for the clear vision, uh as you feel like. Three fifteen and north. So that was one. I'll bring that later, but we're talking about it, so. Um I think that needs to be a part of the item as well, when the, if it's. Any other comments or questions about um the planning manager's seat roles report?
Mayor, I did have two other items to just note in the planning realm. One is that the planning commission did um approve. Uh recommending, recommending the downtown improvement plan um recommendations in there. So that ordinance will be to the plant, to the city council, sorry, the first meeting of May. Uh they, they recommended approval with, with no changes and that really summarizes a lot of what we heard and talked about. Um last month, I think it was during your work session of the downtown plan. And then the other, the other item is you may have seen some silk fencing on um Shady Brook. They're gonna start work on the left-hand turn lane. Uh next week. So just kind of, kind of getting some of those items lined up and um I just got the schedule today from Lenar, so we'll. We'll post some updates for the community so they know, so they know what's happening there too.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? People find the land these applications are listed, especially any comments from there. Right, carrying on. And then I think, let's see, finance department. Don't.
Mayor, true, I mean, Mayor Melford, um. No, we're not in a staff report this month, but last Friday you did uh um the tone, the interest, the biennial budgets. There is two thousand, uh twenty-three, twenty-five, law review. Um we look forward to, uh well, I'll be speaking at time of long, whether than you have on Wednesday evening. Um but as far as just kind of um any sort of updates, nothing unusual over the, the month of March. Um from a financial tracking standpoint, I think. Um I guess at this point, um after going through the budget process and just hanging up loose ends with the past couple of fiscal years, just to better. Making sure we have firm footing about what we have to start with um going into the next biennium. It's looking like um we're really only going to need to do two, maybe three, um different department or funds. Um we'll need a supplemental budget this year. Um after doing all of the final analysis. Uh community development for sure, because of all the um more than expected U G B. Um related planning and consulting expenses for that process going on as long as it did. Um it looks like we're slightly over um on the parks capital um fund. And then, believe it or not, um public safety is um projected to really only be. Um spending at about nine percent more than over, over budget and a supplemental, you know, to go over, you have to go over by at least ten percent. So we may do a supplemental just to provide some cushion to potentially go over ten percent with overtime expense for the rest of the year. And not rely on um an uncertain projection, but those are really kind of the three. Areas where a supplemental will, will be pursuing with you um in May. Um so. More to come on that, but uh then we'll talk a little bit about them Wednesday evening as well, but um yeah. Um. Hopefully things are, it's, it's reading smoothly and we look forward to questions and, and discussion on the beginning of it on Wednesday evening.
Um all right, yes, our agenda is new business. Is there any new business? Um next is unfinished business? Anything that we need to fill out?
No. What's, what is the mayor? He made for clear day and about fifty days. And he. That they said here, you know.
It's on the city calendar already. Um the. Uh direct sale day, the first Saturday in May and the clear date is the next Saturday in May.
Mm hmm. Yeah, but we had to get through this last event and uh in the midst of the last event, that's when a lot of the sixty anniversary planning was going on and now we're moving on to the next event, which is. Those coming up in May. So we'll start having some of those announcements going on shortly and the postcards too. The county will be mailing those out.
Your postcards are only sent out again?
Yep.
There's some reason, there's a certain section of people that never get. The postcard. And every year we get advice that they don't get, they don't get. Have we figured out why then?
It's possible that they haven't updated their, if they've went, changed from a P O box to a street address or vice versa. They haven't updated it with the county because the county is the one that sends these out and they go off of their address list that they have at the county. And if they, if you. Residents haven't updated their mailing address with the county, then they're not going to get it. Because we do that when we have mailings that go out. We get the list from the county and we send it out and. We get a lot of them back as under deliverable.
Well, i- if you know anyone in specifically, that point in my direction and we'll see if they have a zip code nine seven one three three, they should be getting it. That's the determining factor. It's just a zip code. Yeah.
Well, if I do the traffic, you know. Take a piece of paper with you and just ask if they got it or not.
Yeah, yeah. Not everyone, there's a chance that not everyone is being truthful too sometimes. I'm not saying, but you know, I am kind of, but.
Ended in the circle.
Yeah.
Um well, we're leading into the city manager report. So I'm.
Okay, a few items. Uh one, you probably saw an email earlier today. Uh the weather has not been nice on Jesse Mays for. Well, for anything, but uh. There's a few items that we needed to tie up. The weather has never cooperated. One of those is the shelter going in. Another one of those is. Dealing and fixing with some of the turf issues. We finally made the determination, determination today as a project team. Let's just go ahead and open up all the, the playground equipment and everything. Our inspector was here on Friday and he looked everything, everything over and he said the, the equipment's installed the way it should be. So we'll just rope off the, the concrete pad area, put some cones there and um let the community know, you know, don't enter there. Um like the shelter, for instance, today, today's the day the, the concrete finally cured. It could have been installed. We, we're gonna need dry weather for that because it takes some epoxy to, to adhere to the, to the surface. That could take a month, you know, so we could be. I, I could be looking, you know, I don't need to be the bad guy for this next month while we're waiting for the weather to clear. I'd rather kids be, be using it and we'll um. When, when they come out and finish up some of these items, it's not going to take long. So we'll just rope off that area at that point. Um I think the community will understand. There was some work remaining to do. We'll do that. We'll knock it out and that should, um that should take care of that. And so the guys will put up the tennis courts net, tennis court net um sometime later this week too. We have a couple of pickleball nets that we purchased. Um I intend to just put them out on wheels for the community to use and we'll have some rules. People want to use them, wheel them out. We didn't want them dragged around wheels for that purpose and then you can wheel them back to the side um against the fence. If those get destroyed. It, this is not going to be something we do more than once. So I'm hoping the people are, are respectful about that. Um so that's Jesse Mays. Uh we got the final word today from the Y M C A. They have the programs set for doing, at least to start with, three kind of summer camps. Um in North Plains, one at Jesse Mays and two at, at Folley. So we'll start uh broadcasting some of that later this week. There'll be some. Football and multi-sport and soccer camps. Um. The. Piece of property on the commercial street. Um just, I reviewed some of the title, preliminary title reports on that, some of that information and then we're doing, have the environmental analysis. I just signed the paperwork on that today. So some of the environmental. Preliminary environmental stuff is being done on that. Um just to see if there's any red flags on that. We're also going to look at some other key downtown properties that were identified in the downtown plan. It's going. A little bit more, a little bit more money to do an environmental scan of all these different properties that are identified as opportunity areas. So we're gonna do that as well. Um some positive news and I've, I've been hesitant to spread this around too much because I've had my heart broken uh previous times, but. We do have a public works director that should be starting next week. Uh his name is Dustin. He's uh enthusiastic, comes from Clean Water Services. He's got a, a great background and he was with. The Army Corps of Engineers for ten years. He is with, um he did. Public Works inspecting and water and waste water um and things like that in Kansas. And now he's been with uh Clean Water Services, being um an inspector there. So he's got a good background. He was a teacher for a while, so he's, he's definitely a public servant. And to me, it's one of the key things I'm looking for is someone's, their heart is in it. Um so that's exciting. And, and then lastly, I sent out an, an email earlier today. Uh regrettably, uh we need to make a correction. With the, the levy numbers for, for folks, what we enlisted in there. Um unintentionally, there's no malicious intent here, but. What the numbers show was what the cost will be for a police department when it's all full, uh you know, five persons. Uh overnight coverage, what that cost will be, basically what the revenues would, would, would need for that versus what, what they were asking for in the form is. What is the levy, amount of levy revenue raising? What does the new revenue raising? So there's a, a delta there. I think what residents would see is it's going to be a lot less than what we had showed in the voter's pamphlet and what will show up on the ballot. Um but that's the bad news. Uh we can't correct that. It's too late to correct that. So. I spoke to the divisions election, the city attorney. They just said at this point, this, this has happened before. At this point, just send a postcard out to correct it with the information you want to send. Talk about this at public meetings. We'll obviously talk about it at the town hall. Um and I've even emailed a couple of residents, kind of, they had emailed questions before. I emailed them this weekend with corrections, saying, hey, you know. Actually, this is what the number should be and they appreciated that. They're like, okay, yeah, that's lower. That, that makes more sense. So that was. You know, erroneously, we sent that out. Um that's on me. I, I regret it, um but we'll get it corrected. I think one of the other good news is um. I've voted on levies probably fifteen times in my voting career and I hardly ever make it to the bottom to see how much revenue is, you know, it's usually a black box for people. You just want to know at the top. How much is this going to cost and what are we getting? So, but we'll talk about them on Thursday too and we'll message it to the community um later this week. At the community meeting and, and postcards going out next week too. Um but I do want to echo the mayor's comment earlier. I, I encourage everyone to make it out on Thursday that, that can on six. Uh we need, we need that support. I know there's a pack starting up to support efforts and it's. Very important and we'll talk about that on Wednesday at the budget committee as well too.
Question.
Just one question. Um we talked about pickleball going back and forth. But do we have anything to put on, up on the court? Do we put other equipment on? And then the court.
Like with the pickleball net?
Well, no, it, it, put anything else on the. In the garlic festival and, and the equipment.
That will be a good conversation later this summer as we do dig into a lot of the planning. Yeah, because we don't want a new court to, you know, to be. Uh damaged or anything like that. So we'll need to look at, maybe there's some, some temporary mats or something like that that we can, that we can use. Now. That court was extra reinforced with about eight inches, about double the amount of concrete you would normally have with rebar. Takes, to take some heavy weight on it, but the surface itself has a nice coating, so we don't want to see that. I mean, that, that, that concrete is doubly reinforced. Um but it's just the surface itself that we want to be cognizant of, not, not ruining. I mean, that, that, that concrete is doubly reinforced, um, but it's just the surface itself that we want to be cognizant of, not, not ruining. And we, I mean, we will work with Neep on, on that, on those sorts of things. Because yeah, we'll have a lot of traffic, there'll be stage, there'll be beer garden.
I know the, the surface, it costs a lot of money.
Yeah, it's not something I don't want to do immediately, if we can avoid it, yeah.
Um. Looking at the um, calendar, are there any council reports?
I guess I know one. Anyway. I did attend the city events. I'm kind of glad I did because I was the only one there, or outside of the citizens. But the mayor was happy to see more people on. But, uh.
Thank you for going.
Oh, sure. Well, one thing I, you know, a couple of things I liked that happened. The back TV, they had a segment of video that they put together for, I hope that really added to the city. I'm not sure if we can do that, do the fact. And the mayor went around different businesses and thoughtful and it's. Plenty of cities.
It was well done. I watched it again. I'm watching the race that it's.
I thought I said something, it was a little confusing, it was very stupid. Everything has its own fun before you, you know, to. I guess it's not like good if you do something that would be uh, a little hot and thirsty, you know, you have something. Probably do all the food, but kind of do it. The other thing I like, the short, I almost barely, too many of the half. They put together and they. And you kind of, so they put the cap. And if, you know, there's something you could do. Because I think a lot of people, they step up to the long way to the end, and they go to the gate, and you kind of like. Talk to that. How much was that second one, you played, after you run it a half this year? I see you go, you go, you, you go, you tell me, when you know what's a legal people will step up. You know, there are a lot of, when you go to banks, you're like, I need to, thanks, sorry. I think that one is, uh, you see, pop out. Any question where I went? And I talked to Jerry, really, I'm surprised that you've got no party to ask him, so he went to see, he got more party to ask to it. And you found it, you found it.
A lot of the brains, we've got this.
Well, you're welcome. You're a nice man.
All right, uh, maybe another council, what do you want? I know that uh, I attended, I think you were talking about a few things there. And um, having mentioned, uh, very little information for the downtown improvement plan. Um, let's go, um. Had a Russian kind of mayor from the last Friday. Uh, I got on the name of Linda Flynn, uh, presented um, this, she, she's. She's working with this pride contact area, D R T and H S R O N F O and R C C. It's called Our Creative Future. It's her basic cultural plan. And what they are looking, what she's looking to do is kind of create a master plan, their cultural scene and arts and watching the county. Um, it's supposed to be um, an open community survey that she's supposed to provide all of us, so we get it to our communications person that, you know, about the, in the university, get feedback. Um, but there, it appears, there's kind of, you know, there's some pros and cons to the conversation we have. And oh, it'd be a great idea and other mayors, uh, oh, let's see if I go waste money. And so there's just a lot of back and forth, but um, regardless, when I find out what about the survey and see what that looks like. Um, she wants to know what we do is, you know, kind of what it claims for, you know, culture and arts and things like that. And I really, you know, talked up the library course because that's where it all happens. It starts there and um, I'll also talk about, you know, uh, M P V A. So um, I might have some more additional information to share with that, with you all. And I'll probably go through Robin first, just so she can, that it, take a look at it, see if that's something that we want to participate in. Um, she was pretty surprised that we, uh, you know, shared the fact that we have, um. We, we, we learned through our community survey that we have, you know, eleven different spoken languages. Um, in the, in the home sphere of, I mean, so, so she was, uh, she was, she had no clue and. This was, this was the last time we did it, like, well, as you know, but, um, and it had been a while. So I heard Sherry come out and take a tour and watch what's going on, not in the news, so, um. And she might show up at the library, but I mean, because with the wind, just be aware of, um, and then I've had uh, W C C C, Russian California, uh, meeting this today. Again, very heavy metro. Um, and, you know, just looking at the preservation, really, the general, the streets and that, you know. Um, so a little bit of feedback there, but it's kind of a five way, I mean, it was all about what's going on in that road. Uh, you know, not really looking at the smaller cities, banks, you know, and things, you know, so. Um, and then we had a um, kind of meeting after that one with um, Catherine Harrington. And there's a lot of conversation about um, Rodan. Um, so they are really, um. They have a, a pretty strong effort at the town level with Rodan. Um, oh gosh, what's his name, Matt's? Matt's, right? Yeah, um. He was on the call and, um, you know, just, just gave the perspective that we want to work with the cities to learn what areas are the block and. And how we can collaborate together, I mean, at county level. And I know that Andy has met with Matt and has had conversations. I know that, you know, we're, we, we've done a phase one, we're looking at things to approach them in the summer. So they were happy to hear that we would dial into that topic. And pay attention to what's going on and how a community even outside of, so. Um, we talked a little bit about their art, but um, Christian Willie um, spoke about that. And tomorrow night, uh, Catherine Harrington will be um, on Zoom with the C E O meeting. I'm not sure if you all get that email. Um, she'll be on that particular call, talking about the town meetings. And then we make third, actually, we have a few, so there is a budget meeting for the county and it's uh, in person. Apparently dinner refreshments are going to be served at five thirty and then they're going to jump into this, this meeting and this meeting conversation at six. I believe it's May third. I'll, I'll check the calendar and then send an email out. She usually always gives me three or four. So we let the city, and that, that's it for me. You know, any questions? All right. Um, before I give your evening back to you, is there any final words? All right. Thank you all very much for coming and listening. We've been a lot of really good people, so I would love to read any of them.